So we've got 44 people in here.
How many said Barbara was here?
You know I'm counting. At 49, we gotta stop.
You're going to welcome our new members?
Yes.
What?
They're gonna be appointed voting members.
Well, one of them forgives. And if Mike shows up, then there'll only be one half the time for me. I thought he said Barbara was here. Or she is.
That's the cables' job.
Oh. He said that's what the cables pick up, not his. Shouldn't do that. I should shut my phone off. What?
I turned the volume off.
He's not on yet.
But Barbara is.
I put it in big enough text at the top of the agenda. And I did, I reminded him personally.
Please note the new start time.
Are you ready? Are you ready? Okay. When you're ready, let me know. I will...
Boy. Because you realize you were on my bad ear side. I just thought I would warn you. So if you, if you, if you say something and I don't respond...
I am.
Trish?
Two more.
Five. We'll go with your count.
Yep.
We get... Mr. Kozak, if we get two more people, we're at capacity.
Or we have to call the fire chief.
Why not you? Just to make sure, one way or the other. You need a hand?
Yeah, I can't see the damn camera.
There you go.
Thank you.
You're free.
Okay.
He's gonna try to call Mike.
Oh, okay. So...
Your mic is on.
So this is... And then this block, this ring here?
Yes.
Okay. And our wetlands are... A good map, but I just wanted to get like an overview.
I apologize for that. We have one of our members who had an operation today. And he didn't be honored as an officer. He thought that he was supposed to sign a certificate, he'll be honored at all.
So Dennis is gonna be served... I know.
Right, and I watched that. Gonna drive it, and then we'll drive it. Do we have to study something like for aquifer that exists somewhere? And how they can get... We have, we have those.
He said he was getting right on. Sometimes you just... I'm not a Zoom fan.
In my head, I'm playing the Final Jeopardy music.
Are there names up there?
No, Mr. Conley comes in as himself.
He does, okay. All right. At least someone turned the air conditioner on.
Yes.
He said he was getting right on. Good old Zoom. I did bring my phone in though. He didn't call me back, no.
How long did it take for his computer to fire up?
I don't know.
Fifty... What he had done, maybe he's not moving too quick.
He said he wasn't dying.
What?
He said he wasn't dying.
Oh, that's good.
But I gotta get this... Oh, come on, Mike. You know, could be, he could be having some technical problems with Zoom, you know? I don't know. But he should, I brought my phone, I had it on the car. It's on vibrate, so it should...
While he's coming in, because it's... Wait, wait. Give him a count of 10, I'm gonna go let the cable know.
Okay, yep, yep.
Oh, here he is.
Yep, he's in, yep. Okay. He's my son. He was, is he still there? Yeah, there's Mike, okay.
I don't know who he's, I don't know who he's got a name.
We're all set, ladies and gentlemen. Now, the zoning board of appeals will come to meeting at 7:10 PM. Jim, you take a roll call, please.
Mr. Kozak?
Here.
Mr. Hamel?
Present.
Mr. Conley?
Present.
Mr. Gibbs is excused. Ms. McCarthy?
Present.
Alternates, Ms. White?
Present.
Ms. Reardon?
Present.
Mr. Sylvia?
Present.
Please stand for the pledge allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm gonna appoint Mrs. Silver for a voting member in place of excuse Mr. Gibbs. And now onto the deliberation. And just so everybody is aware...
Okay, for that, for this item, I'm going to recuse myself.
Thank you. And I will appoint Ms. Reardon, voting member, in place of Mr. Hamel. We will start the meeting at the deliberation at 7:10 PM. Just so everyone knows, the format... This is the second or third month that we, well, I think the second month that we tried to do deliberation because of members missing and so forth. There are no questions from the audience, no questions from the applicants. It's strictly... Hang on one second, there's nothing you can say tonight?
Recording in progress.
Give it to the chair, give it to the, right, okay. But, because we are, we're in the middle of our deliberation. Will we cancel the meeting? Last time, we felt we couldn't make a decision that evening. And so that's where we're starting off. We'll be doing a deliberation. We're gonna talk amongst ourselves, and that's it. And then we will go into the voting of the five criteria. And then the same thing will happen later on this evening. We'll be, we're gonna be discussing a rehearing on the second application tonight. That's where we're at. Okay, and people, I've got some comments that I want to make on, on some of the stuff that I reviewed in the last couple of weeks. And, and it... I'm not trying to force anybody to vote, but some of the things that I read, that were, that brought us, when we looked at all these plans and so forth. When I looked at the notification from the building inspector, and I think most of us members felt the same way. You know, the site, the approval from the, or the discussion that the building inspector must have had with the applicant. And one of the things in there that, what really stuck out at me is, is the possibility of a CAF. And to me, a CAF was a commercial venture, you know? In this residential we're looking at. That, that kinda stuck in my throat, because if you look at the applications, the first, the first amount of it, he says nothing about workforce housing. Yet he does say it in a couple of, of the couple of five terriers. And even, this was staunchy, I guess, the building inspector. You know, the site plans were no good, basically what he said. The liability waiver and all those things. But, so there was a lot missing in the plans, I think, that we had to deal with. And that's about all I had to say, and, and as, as I looked at it. Mike, I mean, I can't remember what you were gonna take a look at, Mike. Did you find anything that was interesting in the past months to board members?
No, I found some of the same discrepancies amongst all, you know? I look at it, it's the same paperwork, same theme all throughout. So sometimes workforce is mentioned, sometimes it's not. So I think this needs to be... I think there's some clarity that's not in my mind as to what the true intent is. So that's why I'll leave that.
Mike, we could hardly understand you. I'm not sure if it was your mic or...
He was in, he said he was in agreement with you.
Jim, can you help him with the volume?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, a little better now, Mike, yes, yep.
All right, so, so I found some of the same discrepancies and lack of word and same theme throughout all documents.
Any other comments from anyone?
I'm, I'm wondering... In regards to the verbiage of workforce housing, I'm assuming that's... Has it been indicated that workforce housing is needed for the existing? Is there been anything that backs up the claims for the need for the workforce housing?
The town of Newton, in their master plan, does not have a, they have not put in anything about workforce housing. They have not adopted a plan yet. I checked with the board.
Yeah, I just, you know, it seems that the hardship is that there is none, and it's needed. I'm just wondering if there's anything to support that state.
I don't know. If, we have, there's apartments in town, I'm not sure any of those are going on workforce housing. I'm not sure, yep, 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 yep. Well, if, if there's no, no other questions, I'm just gonna read out what the residential A zoning uses are. Section 17. "The residential A zone, no building or structure shall be erected or altered, and no building structure on premises shall be used for any purpose except the following: no more than one family dwelling." "Board members are reminded that the, under deliberation, no questions can be asked of the applicant or public. Clarification question may be asked to the administrative assistant only." No, there was one other thing that, that stuck in my craw, and I, and I can't remember who the, the member was, but it was about the road that went down to the, to the proposed buildings. And the question was asked, something like this, I might not be perfect. "The road looked awful narrow, can a school bus get down that road to pick up children?" And the answer from one of the applicants represented was, "There will be no children." I'm not sure how it affects workforce housing. I just had to get that out, because it was something, it's down there. Anyway. No further questions? Jim, would you like to read the applications, starting with the first criteria? And the applications answer? And everybody get ready to make an answer, or do whatever, okay?
Okay. Criteria number one. "Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because..." The applicant's response. "The proposed development is located between an industrial development and an open space cluster development. Therefore, we do not believe the project will alter the essential character of the neighborhood." Mr. Conley, do you agree?
I do not.
Can you repeat that, Mr. Conley?
My answer is nay.
I can't tell you.
I think he said no, I'm sure, I'm not... Was it a no?
Thank you.
Hey, okay.
Mr. Sylvia?
Nay.
Ms. McCarthy?
Nay.
Ms. Reardon?
Abstain.
Mr. Kozak?
"This property is owned residential A. And I believe granting the variance does not observe the spirit of the ordinance. This is a commercial venture." I vote no.
Thank you. Criteria two. "If the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed because..." The response of the applicant is, "In the opinion of the applicant, that granting the proposed variance will provide the safe development of workforce housing in an area where it is least impacting and most needed, thereby meeting the spirit of the ordinance." Mr. Conley, do you agree?
I do not.
Mr. Sylvia, do you agree?
I do not.
Mr. Kozak, do you agree?
Do I, I'm sorry. I, I wrote some comments down earlier. "Zone residential A, the construction of 55-unit apartment complex is not consistent with a residential neighborhood. It would change the character of the neighborhood. Therefore, does not observe the spirit of the ordinance." I vote no.
Ms. McCarthy?
I vote no.
Ms. Reardon?
Abstain.
Criteria three. "Granting the variance would do substantial justice because, according to the applicant, the proposed development would allow the construction of multifamily workforce housing. There are currently no provisions for this type of housing in town. Therefore, substantial justice would be done." Mr. Conley, do you agree?
I do not.
Mr. Silver, do you agree?
I do.
Ms. McCarthy, do you agree?
I do.
Mr. Kozak, do you agree?
No, allowing more than one building housing in a residential A zone would cause a public harm. The zoning buzz, the zoning board does not rewrite zoning laws. I vote no.
Ms. Reardon?
Abstain.
Criteria number four. "If the variance were granted, the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished because, according to the applicant, the proposed object, the proposed project is either sufficiently distant to abutting homes, or the surrounding properties are sufficiently similar in nature, cluster, so as the values would not be diminished." Mr. Conley, do you agree?
I do not.
Mr. Silver, do you agree?
I do not.
Ms. McCarthy, do you agree?
I actually agree. After doing some research, values have not diminished, so I agree.
Mr., Mr. Kozak, do you agree?
No, I do not. "The presence of multifamily buildings just behind and close to the existing Sagerwood units, and the low-end design of the buildings would have a negative effect on some properties. Values in Sagerwood's diff was, does not observe the spirit of the ordinance." I vote no.
Ms. Reardon?
Abstain.
Criteria five. "Owing to the special conditions that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because: One, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific applications of that provision to the property because, according to the applicant, the existing lots are currently landlocked and would require the construction of a public access road to access for allowed use. The location adjacent to the industrial park limit the visibility of a single-family residential development." Mr. Conley, do you agree?
I do not.
Mr. Silver, do you agree?
I do not.
Ms. McCarthy, do you agree?
I do not.
Mr. Kozak, do you agree?
No, I do not. "No hub should exist. The applicant could have used other ways to use the property: cluster housing, subdivision, or change from residential A to residential B or C." I vote no.
Ms. Reardon?
Abstain.
Item two under hardship. "The proposed use is reasonable one because, according to the applicant, the proposed use as a multifamily workforce housing is reasonable as it is located between the industrial park and the residential cluster development, and provides for multifamily workforce housing where there is no provision for such in Newton." Mr. Conley, do you agree?
I do not.
Mr. Silver, do you agree?
I do not.
Ms. McCarthy, do you agree?
I do not.
Mr. Kozak, do you agree?
I, I do not. I'm not sure if the town of Newton already has workforce housing. There's no analysis on the apartment buildings that exist. I vote no.
Ms. Reardon, do you agree?
Abstain.
Mr. Chairman, none of the criteria were met.
The next move would be to either approve, deny, well, denial, or, or no finding. Do we have anybody that has an idea?
Is this, Jack, are you asking for a motion?
I'm sorry, what was this question?
Are you asking for a motion, Jack?
Yes, yeah, yes, Mike. And you have a packet in front of you. I think you probably had some time to look things over. Just to what we might, okay, yeah.
Based on, on all the votes, I'm going to make a, a motion to deny. I'll make a motion to deny the request. I'm going to pull up electronically my packet.
Jim, can you? Mike, we can hardly hear you, Mike. Can you hear him, Jim?
I believe he just made a motion to deny the, the variance request.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Speak up, Trish.
I'll, I'll second for discussion, however, that's... I don't believe we should do a denial. I think we should do a no funding, a no finding. But that's not the motion on the floor, so...
That is correct, so we can discuss the two then.
Right.
Trish, Ms. McCarthy would like to review the no, no finding from the ZBA with comments. Mike, are you aware of that, Mike? Do we can do that? Did we lose Mike?
Yeah, now, can you hear me?
Yep, now.
Yeah, so I'm open to discussion.
Okay.
And I think that's where we can move it to...
You want to read that?
You want me to read that?
Yeah, Trish is gonna read, read it on the no finding, Mike, okay?
So this is a potential option. So no, no finding by statute is, "The ZBA can find, in fact, that whereas no hardship exists, and recognizing the importance of the constitutional right to enjoy property, and in light of the New Hampshire Supreme Court conclusion in the Bartlett versus City of Manchester, 164 N H 634, 635 in 2013, that the mere filing of a variance application does not limit the ZBA's ability to determine whether the applicant's proposed use of the property requires a variance. The ZBA recommends the applicant look into the possibility of subdivision of the land, a cluster development, to be applied to the, to be applied to the planning board in whose purview these matters belong, or in seeking to rezone land to residential C."
Mike, were you able to hear that, okay?
I did.
Okay. But we still have, we still have your on the, on the table, and this possibility. How do we move forward, gentlemen?
I think we have to vote first on the motion he made.
So, actually, if I'm correct, I can retract? Am I not correct?
Okay.
You can retract, yes.
Yeah.
We saw it.
So, so... I like Ms. McCarthy's approach. I didn't hear enough to support this, that's why my decision is to deny. I think this may be a better approach. So in that light, I am going to retract my statement.
Good, Mike, I just want to make, everybody realizes if, if we deny it, that's it, he has one, one bite of the apple. He can't come back with this plan again. And that's why I think this, this might be a valued option. That's my personal feeling, yeah.
Yeah, so, so in light of... In light of what Ms. McCarthy is bringing to the table, I would like to retract my motion and leave it open to somebody to make the next motion. Or to let Ms. McCarthy's motion go forward.
It's in your hands, you want to make a motion?
No, is it back for discussion now?
Can he discuss before?
Oh, yes, definitely, yes, yeah, yeah.
I don't disagree with the no-finding. I'm just reading through criteria for denial, and I'm finding it. It seems overwhelming for denial in just reading through it.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, yeah.
And that's why, you know, in reading through everything, you, you know, obviously, the approval, it doesn't fall in the criteria. You read through option two, you think, that's very, that's a very good option, and it's a very good motion, I think, as well. But then when you get to the denial, in my opinion, there's, there's not one point here that can be argued or disputed.
And I think that's the, what Ms. McCarthy just read gives them a chance to clean this area up. Because they're not, but they'll be back to us with, on some kind of a scale.
Right.
This is a fair warning to them to clean it up. That's my personal opinion.
Okay. Any other questions?
John, anything else, John, you want to move forward?
No, that was, I just, I'd like to.
You know, for your first night on the board.
Well, you know, I did have the pleasure of sitting in a few meetings unknowingly beforehand.
Trish, you want to make that a motion, read it again, and get it in as a motion?
Can I make one suggestion?
Yes, of course, yes.
Simply take where it says the ZBA can, take out the word can, and you can read all of that as a motion.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion for a no-finding. By definition, the ZBA find, in fact, that whereas no hardship exists and recognizing the importance of the constitutional right to enjoy property, and in light of the New Hampshire Supreme Court conclusion in Bartlett versus City of Manchester, 164 N.H., 634, 635 in 2013, that the mere filing of a variance application does not limit the ZBA's ability to determine whether the applicant's proposed use of property requires a variance. The ZBA recommends the applicant look into the possibility of a subdivision of land, a cluster development, to be applied for, to be applied to the planning board in whose purview these matters belong or seeking rezone of the land to residential C.
We have a second.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? Mike?
No, I'm good.
John, any further discussion? I'm going to call a vote.
Mr. Conley?
Aye.
Mr. Silver?
Aye.
Ms. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mr. Kozak?
Aye.
Ms. Riordan?
Abstain.
The motion carries. Mr. Hamel returns to his seat on the board. Ms. Riordan returns being an alternate. We're just going to use her tonight. Okay, all right. The second item we have coming up here is the 125 Development request for a rehearing. Let me get on my paperwork here. Forwarded. Has everybody read through the applicant's rehearing request?
Mr. Chairman, can I speak for a second?
No.
Can't?
No, you can't, no.
Like Roger recues himself, that's all I'm saying. Roger has to recuse himself. I'm requesting it.
No, he doesn't. Yeah, Roger, you're further.
You waived that last time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I want to, sorry, I'm not there. I want to understand, was there a request?
Actually, no. I would like, I would like the applicant to make his request and explain to me why I should. Well, it's tonight.
I'll give you an opportunity.
If I need to make the decision to, what? So you're, again, wait, so for tonight, you are waiving any objection? So you retract for tonight? What? Okay, okay, but again, so you have not given?
This needs to be on record.
Can you please go to the mic so that it will get recorded?
Let's get this going so we can get out. Come on, Tom, come up.
I am open to the possibility of recusing myself, but I need a reason.
The reason being?
I gave the reasons why I didn't recuse myself previously.
I understand that what you said, but I said, last time, I said, the only reason I let you come back on the board again because we didn't have a quorum. Tonight, we do. You are in a butter. You're splitting hairs on the industrial park, saying what is what and what isn't I'm butter. If you live in Sargent Woods, you're butter. It's in the whole.
But where, why, the application before?
Look, I'm not going to argue with it. This is all I'm saying to you is I would ask for yourself to recuse yourself because you're not butter. You say you're not, so we have a difference of opinion, but I'm asking you again, recuse yourself. We have a quorum. You're not needed.
May I make a comment? My name's Coleman McDonald.
Yes.
The explanation of an abutter is not, and I've stated this before, it's not a lot line to lot line. An abutter is somebody who is affected by the project. And Mr. Hamel is affected by the project, but recuses himself sometimes and doesn't recuse himself other times. He's affected by the whole project. So, he's affected, he's in a butter, and he needs to recuse himself. And one last comment, on your previous finding, you state that make application to the planning board and rezone the property to residential. I just want to make the board aware that the two pieces of property that comprises the land for the workforce housing is already residential.
Residential A, we know that, yeah. Yeah, but residential A is one dwelling on the piece of property, not multiple.
So therefore, so therefore, Jack, so therefore, right, if your rules and regulations state that in residential A, I am only allowed one unit for that piece of property, you should so state that. So you should deny the application because it doesn't meet your regulations?
Coleman, we can't go backwards right now.
We're not going back. We're not going back. Okay, let's move on, gentlemen, okay? Yes, Mike?
You need to make a decision, and I'm just going to state this for the record. It was okay for Roger, it was okay for Roger to be there the last one, but I'll leave that up to you to make a decision in Roger, but we can't play what's in favor for one and not favorable this meeting. We have to have some consistency, and we're either Roger's on or he's off, so that needs to be decided. Coleman, this is not up for discussion. Coleman, I'll talk, I'm going to talk. This is not up for discussion. This is for the board. The board needs to make that decision, and Jack, that has to, you have to figure that out.
I can't quite hear him.
Okay, Mike, I thank you for your comments, and with that, even though this decision is completely mine, I will, as I did last month, ask to poll the board, seeing that they know the options, and get everyone's opinion.
Jim, you want to take a poll of the members, please?
Is there a motion?
Well, someone, well, someone make a motion that we either have Roger recuse himself or not.
I'll accept, I'll put that as the motion, Mr. Hamel.
I'll second for discussion, and then not vote.
Okay. Any comments?
Okay, what happened, and I can give you some more history. What happened is, if you look at the current assessors map, 27-3 abuts Sargent Woods, but what has happened, in a small piece, but in January, they subdivided 27-3, so now there's a lot called 27-7. So there's a lot between Sargent Woods that 125 Development owns, between them, between Sargent Woods and the lot that this work is being done on. Also, the residential property that you just discussed, those properties are also owned by 125 Developments. They abut on one side, Sargent Woods, and on the other side, 27-3, this lot.
So on the rehearing request, did you receive an abutter's notice?
There were no abutter's notices for that.
Sorry, for the original hearing?
Who sends out, the abutter's notices come from a list generated by the applicant.
At our direction?
No, it's their responsibility to generate, because technically, they don't actually have to send a butter notices to every dwelling in Sargent Woods. They can send one, according to the law, they can send one to the board of directors, then the board of directors are responsible for telling people.
Technically, yes. So technically, yes, you got an abutter's notice.
For the original, for the original hearing, yes.
Whereas this is an extension of the original hearing, all due respect, if you got an abutter's notice, I would think that you should.
Okay, thank you.
I think, and again, I know last time you stepped in probably because I wasn't here, but typically, for as long as I can remember, you do step away.
Well, let it.
And I know you read that letter a couple of months ago, whatever that was, but I think, to Mike's point, consistency should prevail here instead of muddying the waters, and I really think you should step down for this.
I have to agree.
And really, that was sort of where I, I would rather keep it clean, but I wanted it to be.
Yes, thank you.
Well discussed before I did. So at that point, I will recuse myself from the discussion of the rehearing.
We should have a vote, Jim. But I can just say, please recuse yourself, Roger.
No, he can recuse himself.
Yeah, we don't need to.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Roger. The rehearing request, the 125 Development class, we have requested rehearing under denial, a relief from section 2517, whatever, specified to allow building activity when 50 feet of poorly drained soil. Section 25 specifically to allow building activity within 200 feet setback to residential A, and a proposal for building condominiums, site plan on Main Street. Property is referred to as tax map 14 block 1, lot 27-3. Has everybody had a chance to review the information about the rehearing requests? We have two of them, I think, at least I'm looking at. Take your time, you know, take a look at it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Would you wish to put Ms. Riordan in?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Ms. Riordan, you are now a voting member again, I'm sorry. Anybody have any questions on it? Take your time or whatever. There is one thing that I found interesting in the note of denial, and it's going to affect, it's going to affect how you put the plans to us, and it refers to Mr. Hamel indicated there are areas where impacts are appropriate. Mr. Hamel's arbitration are important to consider at a rehearing, which I think is great because what we put together for you, gentlemen, I'm not sure if you're going to be happy about it, and it'll come up in a few moments as everybody's looking, but on the rehearing, we're going to ask, how many variances are there, Jim, request?
Forty-three.
Forty-three?
Right.
There'll be one application for each one. That way, we won't miss any, whether it 10 feet, 5 foot, or whatever, and you'll have five criteria for each one, and that's how we're going to work on it. We've got the whole thing jotted down, Jim and I worked on it, and whoever we're going to give it to, the engineer, yeah, okay, but that'll all be given to you this evening, and any questions that you have in the future about it, or what we're looking for, you'll go through the administrative assistant. Let me read what, Jimmy, you want to read that, Jim, out loud?
What you propose for a motion?
In light of the application request, yeah.
The motion that you're looking for is to vacate the prior decisions for lot 14-1273 made on 6/122 with the following conditions for a rehearing. Each variance must be submitted on a separate application form. Each application form will need to be discreetly numbered, describing the square footage of impact and the distance of impact in feet and inches, and the variances will need to be shown and labeled on the one-to, one-inch to 20-foot scaled sheets. Is anyone making that motion?
Make someone, we need to make a motion to vacate the prior decision from lot 27-3? Anyone want to make the motion?
I'll motion.
Okay.
Grant a rehearing request.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Mike, did you hear the?
Yes, I did.
Okay, all right. Jim, will you call a vote, please?
Mr. Sylvia?
Yes, aye.
Ms. Riordan?
Abstain.
Mr. Conley?
Aye.
Mr. Kozak?
Aye.
Ms. McCarthy?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
The prior decision has been to allow rehearing, okay?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, just for my clarification, Mr. Sylvia is an acting member, not an alternate.
He's an alternate, but tonight he's a voting member.
And who was the other voting member? Did you appoint, I'm sorry?
Ms. Riordan, yes.
Okay, and not Ms. White?
That's correct.
And she's an alternate as well?
She's an alternate as well, that's correct. Yep, you're welcome. Was Ms. White get on tonight?
Yes.
She is on, okay, I didn't know it, okay.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, thank you, okay. So again, if you have any questions about how that's going to be presented to us, and I thought because of this, there will be so many, that we might set a time limit in those evenings, I don't know, 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock, whatever the board decides after the first night. We'll see how they go. We'll see how they go when they, when we start doing them, and how much time each one is going to take, you know? But if they, if they go to a half an hour on each one on discussion, we might have to move it to the following month, or whatever, yeah. We'll decide that after the first, of the first round. If, and Jim, in order to make sure that it's, it's ready for the August meeting, and to have the board look at it to make sure it's acceptable to our standard, what is the timetable for them to turn that in?
That would need to be here no later than the 25th of July at noon.
So if you could, you could coordinate that with Jim, and if it's not, we can put it after, whatever. You don't seem to think there's going to be a problem, Tom? Okay, okay.
So, Jack, can you hear me?
Mr. Chairman, I think that, um, most of the variances are the same thing, so it'll be the same thing over and over and over again.
Okay, thank you.
I think it should go fairly quickly. I think you could do it in one night. Because, oh, you're splitting it up. It was basically groups of groups.
Yeah.
I know there's a lot of variances, but a lot of them are the same because, you know, how the road is, so...
And with the Tom, okay.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Jack, can you hear me?
Um, yes, go ahead, Mike, I'm sorry.
So, in light, and I, and I think I heard Tom, I think that was Tom, so I apologize if it was not, but if I heard correctly, I think we can do it in one night, which I think would be great if we could, but if we can't, then maybe we should have an alternate plan, and if the board could re, reconvene, if that's possible, sometime in the mid-August, so we're not waiting another month because I don't want to hold everybody up for final decision. But I, I would throw that out there if the board could do it.
There was some words I just couldn't hear, Jim.
Have more than one meeting in August.
Have more than one meeting in August, yeah.
In the beginning and one mid-August.
Yeah. I'm, unfortunately, I'm going away for 10 days sometime in August to celebrate my 60th wedding anniversary, and it's off schedule, so I'm not sure what those dates are. Otherwise, I'll get a divorce, might be not a bad thing after 60, you know, but, uh...
I don't want that, I apologize, Jack, I'm not going to cause that.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask you another question?
Go ahead, Tom.
So we, 27 variances we're going to do, right?
Yeah.
Do I need 27 abutters listed?
Um, Jim, how are we going to approach that?
It can be done in one public hearing, properly noticed. But please remember, the board's policy is every application has an application fee.
Okay. So you don't want 27, though, so you just want 27 applications?
Right, yeah. Well, 40, how much are they, 40?
Forty-three.
Yeah. Yeah, if I look, we looked, we counted them up, what were they?
Whatever.
Pardon me?
I got it.
Okay.
So when you send out the notices, it'll say, notice, but...
I'll, I'll take care of that with Mr. Geer.
Yeah, he'll, he'll, he'll work with your, your engineer, make sure you get that clarified, okay? Well, that's it for any, uh, public meetings tonight, right? We're all done with the both of them that we had on the agenda tonight. Now it's just other items for us to do, yeah. Mike, are you, are you resigning this evening?
You have minutes.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, it should, Chris, is, yeah, move to approve the minutes of 6/1.
So moved.
Any questions or changes?
A second.
Yeah, get a second there?
Second.
Yeah, there you go. Does anybody have any changes to the minutes, Roger?
Nope.
Nope, Trish? Okay, take a vote.
Mr. Sylvia?
Aye.
Mr. Hamel?
Aye.
Mr. Conley?
Aye.
Ms. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mr. Kozak?
Aye. Motion carries.
That's unanimous. Now, Mr. Kozak.
Let's wait.
I regret... We're going to take him, would you call a couple of minute recess?
Take a recess?
Whoa.
Just because everyone's leaving, I can't hear anybody.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for coming. I don't think, you know, I think that was a good idea to do that, you know, that, Trish, a no decision, but I don't think Coleman's happy. Thank you.
Barry?
You know, what, you know, we gave, I think we gave him a lot. Yeah.
Jack?
Yes, Mike?
Just want you to remind you, all your mics are live.
I'm sorry, Mike, what, what?
All your microphones are live.
Mine's gone.
Is, is my mic on?
Yes, that's what he's telling you, you, he, he hears what you're whispering.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, yeah, with, yeah. So I, um, I think about the only, we have two other things to do tonight. Mike is going to resign, because he, pardon me?
Right, he can't do it on TV.
He already sent us letters.
Well, now, it, it, Mike, I, I, you, I guess... Are you resigning as vice chair, or are you resigning from the board?
Uh, I'm resigning from the board, so both.
From the board, oh, okay.
He could have stayed, he could have stayed, he could have stayed on.
Yeah, he could have stayed on, and that, and from what Jim had said, it wasn't completely clear whether he was just resigning as the vice chair or resigning from the board.
No, I'm resigning for the board. There is some, some other reasons that would tie into my selectmen.
Yeah.
I've done a little bit of research, so it is best for the town, for myself. Although, after eight some odd years of doing this, I, I've enjoyed it, I've, I've learned a lot, and I appreciate everything you guys do, and I've, I've become very close with Jack and Roger, and, and Trish, I've gotten to know you, so it, it's been a great experience, but it's some, a decision that needs to be made for the best of everybody, including the town.
Yep.
I make a motion that we accept his resignation with
With regrets.
great regrets, a, 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 and to thank him very much for his years of service on the board, and wish him the very best of luck in his new endeavors.
Good and need it.
Jack, yes, I will.
I believe that the expression is, may God have mercy on his soul.
Yes, Mike, does somebody second that?
Yes, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Mike, the best of luck to you, Mike, you know?
Hey, I'm still here in the town as selectman. Trust me, we're going to run into each other, and, and I look forward to it. I really appreciate everybody.
About the only thing I think we might be, be discussing is a, is a vice chair tonight.
Uh, that would be appropriate for the next meeting because it's not on your agenda.
Oh, yeah, the agenda, that's correct. Then, I, I left the jury.
The, the, well, the agenda has, has a, that's going to come with it. Is there no manifest tonight, Jim? No manifest?
No, no, I, because of the holiday, I did not have time to...
The meeting is adjourned, is 7:56 PM. Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it.
Let's shut off our mics.
Record.